Thank you very much. Roll call, please. Ms. Kluck.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Ms. Madiker?
Here.
Mr. Shi? Mrs. Pang? Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel? Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Dr. Haydock?
Here.
Seven present.
Great. Thank you so much. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th and February 16th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you very much. We're going to go right into our resolutions for this evening. Dr. Bregan and Ms. Kluck, take it away.
Thank you, Board President. As you can see on the administrative report, there's a number of resolutions. First, on the meeting on the 14th, we'll have some student recognitions, as we do normally at June, this time of year. There is a resolution to authorize a power purchase agreement for solar panels. There will be the annual readoption for our bylaws and policies. Our anticipated annual contract renewals. Our summer hours, which will begin when the students exit the schools on June 17th. Athletic training plan of care. Our law enforcement units, which are part of our agreement, our memorandum of agreement with our local police departments. Our statement of assurance for our comprehensive equity plan, which is in its last year this year. We are changing our Board of Education meeting location for the meetings in July and August to the James Monroe Elementary School. Especially if it's warm out, it'll be a little more comfortable in that environment with the building being fully air-conditioned. There's a resolution for onsite clinical services through our PATH program with Rutgers. And then after that, there'll be, there's administrative appointments. And those are typical adoptions of things such as our biosecurity plan, our crisis management plan, designation of our AHRA designated person, anti-bullying coordinator, and things like that, our compliance officer. You'll find all of those, all the way down to our treasury of school monies. And then under curriculum and instruction, we have textbook adoptions for science textbooks in the middle school. I believe it's for earth science and for physical science. Approval of field trips. We have one retroactive field trip for our Odyssey of the Mine team that competed at the Worlds. They did a great job, but it came up after our May board meeting. Professional development activities for our staff, followed by people personnel services for out-of-district placements and our approval of professional services for the upcoming school year. Just a note on that, we approve a great many related service providers. We only choose the ones that we need and at the rates that are acceptable to us. Mr. Board President, that's all I have, and it brings us to the financial reports.
Thank you, Dr. Bregan. Ms. Kluck?
Okay, so for finance, we have our finance reports, our regular approval of minutes for May, our Board Secretary report. For this agenda, we also have our finance designation and employment resolutions. Those are our annual resolutions, including our designations for depositories, et cetera. For our finance resolutions, we have our transfer of funds, our renewal of our food service management company, plus acceptance of several grants. And again, there's quite a few number of approvals and awards for the 2022-2023 school year.
Okay, very good. Anything further there, Ms. Kluck?
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board members for any questions you might have on these resolutions. If nothing, we can move to Board Member Open--
Board President?
Yes.
Quickly, just in regards to the athletic physicians and all these different positions, are they brand-new positions that we're opened up to, or is this something that's, a position that's been there already?
These positions, they are not brand-new. We've had these positions last year.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes, Chivi. Closer to the microphone, please.
Yeah, sure. So, Dr. Bregan, annual readoption of policies and bylaws. I'm assuming nothing has changed. We're just readopting the policies that are already there for this one?
That is correct. It's our current policies and regulations and bylaws. But I did talk to the Board President. We do have some updates that we would like to go over in the summer.
Okay.
And we have to put that policy committee meeting together.
So then we would need to reconvene to approve those policies?
We would just readopt those policies and like we normally would have a first read and then a second read to approve any changes.
Okay, thank you.
The intent is to have a policy committee meeting soon after graduation, before the next July meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question--
Yes, Mr. Bureau Patel.
--about capital reserves. So with the latest information that we have, we are putting $5 million for now, $15 million? How much is it?
I'm having trouble hearing. I'm going to ask you to turn those fans off.
I think it's because of the fans.
Mr. Calabas, can you turn those fans off, because we can't hear anything up here? I can't hear anything. Can you turn those fans off? I apologize.
For those in the audience, we'll try to speak slower and louder for you. Okay.
Oh, yeah, now it's better. Now it's much louder. So with the transfer to capital reserves, how much are we putting as of Tuesday?
Well, that's a good question. You'll see that resolution changed. We did have a transfer to capital reserve, but due to some information we got from our new health broker, we're going to meet on that in the following weeks, that we'd like to transfer those funds to a health insurance reserve.
Okay, so how much are we approving for Tuesday?
We put up to a maximum of $9 million.
So is this the same thing where it says $5 million, or it's changed?
I'm not sure where you're looking at. That was updated. This is the outdated one. It was updated in that capital reserve fund was changed to health insurance fund.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Pang, Mr. Shi. We're just at the point where we have board discussion on resolutions or reports. If you have anything to add.
Is Dr. Bregan going to go through the resolutions? And, you know, maybe, you know, when he goes through, he already has the questions answered?
We just went through all of the different resolutions.
Oh, he already did? I'm sorry.
Yes.
All the resolutions, including the finance?
Yes.
Okay. I actually do have some questions. Sorry. It's quick. I don't know which one exactly what it is. It was about submitting of the architect plans. USA Architects is going to submit. So my question is, we have two architects who designed. You know, if I design something, I have you submit. Let's be more detailed stuff. Is there too much coming? You need to find out what the details from my design. So what is the rationale that we have two architects and we have only one architect to submit these designs? Can we have both of them submit their designs separately?
For each individual project?
Yeah. You know, because the reason is, if you design something, I don't know the details, and I'm submitting, I'm going to call you. We have more discussions. It's probably not necessary. If you design it, you submit it, I design, I submit it. You know, so it'll be a little bit more efficient. That's just the thinking behind it.
The architect that designs the plans are the ones that would submit them to the DOE?
But there's, right now, it says USA is submitting.
It says USA architect--
Maybe I read it wrong. That's why I tried to find that resolution.
We'll take a look at it. If it needs to be adjusted, we'll adjust it by Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah, I think right now it just says USA. Okay.
It would be the architect that designed--
Yeah, it should not go all through USA. That doesn't make sense.
Well, part of the service agreement for those fees is for them to submit their projects to the DOE and solicit approval.
Okay. And the other thing, I saw two furniture bidding. Two, we're purchasing furniture from two separate companies from the co-op. Are there any difference about these two furniture purchases? Or what is the rationale going through two companies instead of going one?
Yeah, without having the specifics in front of me, I really can't answer that question. I know we do use several companies depending on the specifics of the furniture. Like, for example, in some of the designs at the Lincoln Elementary School, the kindergarten furniture was different than the regular classroom furniture. So we used a different vendor for that. Different sized chairs and different styles of desks.
Yeah, because, in fact, in fact, remember, I still haven't found it yet. If I remember, one of it is like a 79, or the other is like 23 or something. It's like close to $100,000. I'm just wondering if we can go through one furniture vendor. I don't know if we can get some volume discount on that. So that's your thinking behind it.
If they're on the co-op, the prices are already established.
They are, but there are multiple, obviously there's a multiple, at least we have two companies that--
Right, right. I'm saying on the co-op, though, they can't, we can't get reduced price if the prices with the co-op--
Yeah, so if we, I don't know if we can get some volume discounts or whatever. Just asking. We're going through two.
If I could add something--
Mr. Patel.
Sure. I would actually prefer that we do get more bids on it, or more accurate quotes, because the co-op, I've come to know that they are actually a lot more expensive than going out for other furniture. Just an example is when we have a library in Clara Barton, they went to get furniture, $600 for a chair that you could look up in Amazon for 200 bucks, and that's something that is going through a co-op. So I don't actually agree in going through a co-op if it's possible.
Point well taken.
Board President--
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Okay, the other is, oh, now I've found it. It's item 12 for the calculators, for $60,000 from Eric Armin. So who is using these graphic calculators and how many calculators we're purchasing?
Yeah, I have to get those specifics. Again, these very detailed, specific questions, Mr. Shi, are helpful in advance, because off the top of my head, I remember a great many things, but that I do not.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to call you, because I was traveling, so--
No, it's understood. I don't have that answer off the top of my head. I assume the graphing calculators are for some of our high school math classes, but I don't want to speculate without having the answer. I get that information.
Okay. And I saw that our kids buy these graphic calculators. Now, which, the school is providing them? Is that, is that the direction we're going?
Again, I don't have the specifics, so I don't want to make a comment that would be inaccurate.
Okay. All right. This is it. Yeah, because I wanted to contact you, but, you know, just tied up today.
No worries. I'll get that information, and I'll email it to the board tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board member comments? For Board Member Open Discussion, I'd like to start on that side with Dr. Haydock. And we'll work our way from that side to this side, if you don't mind. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Dr. Haydock, you don't have to speak, but if you do, that would be nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Shi, for reminding the president from last meeting. So I do have the opportunity just to congratulate a few individuals. I had the opportunity to see our high school students, some of the best in the world, really, because soon they're going to be going to college. And some of the universities that they're applying for and now going to be attending within the next year is something to be very proud of as a town. But recently, Edison and JP had their awards program, and it gave me an opportunity to actually see some of the best of the best. So I applaud those students, even the students that applied that didn't get the scholarships. It'll come. To be patient, and it was great to see that. I also attended the Edison High School Multicultural Day, so I commend Mr. Ross and his staff there for putting that program together. I saw a lot of high school students being very happy to see the range of diversity in our schools and especially at Edison High School. So, great job there. And also, I want to just commend the Jams Drama Club. I didn't get to see their play, but speaking to some of the staff members that I'm aware of, they said it was a job well done for kids to get up on stage, over 100 participants. I just want to commend that organization and Mr. Savarino for all the work he did as an advisor. So, that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Haydock. Mr. Mohan Patel.
Thank you, BP. Just also ditto, just in regards to the awardees that received the grants and the awards just past few weeks for both Edison High and JP Stevens. I want to congratulate you guys again, and the parents and the teachers that actually have taught these kids. And just all around, congratulations to them and wish them the best.
Thank you. Ms. Pang? Mr. Patel?
Nothing further.
Ms. Madiker?
I just want to congratulate all the educators who retired. I missed the function. I was out of the country, and I also missed the seniors' award ceremony. So I want to congratulate all the seniors who got awards. You know, good luck in all your future endeavors and keep it up. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Madiker. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, I just want to echo with my colleagues. You know, I was able to attend the ETEA retirement dinner. It was a phenomenal event. I do want to congratulate our retirees. Thank you for their service. We all appreciate it. And also, I was able to attend the JP Stevens Senior Awards Night as well. And just as Kevin stated, that there was some best of the best there. I was impressed, and I was very happy to participate in the ceremony. So again, best wishes to all those seniors. You guys have some bright futures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shi?
I do not want to repeat everyone said, you know, yeah, congratulations to the teachers and to the students. I actually have one actual question about the resolution.
Sure.
Can I ask? This is about the onsite clinical service, Dr. Bregan. For a rate of $30.09 per employee per year, is that enough for? This is service from the university behavior, healthcare. To me, that's on the low side. I don't know what the usage has been in the past couple of years for a total of $69,000. It's just a curiosity, you know? What, is this allocation based on the previous data, or?
So what I'm hearing is, Mr. Shi, you're asking us for them to charge us more?
No, I didn't ask for the charge--
I'm kidding, no, I'm kidding.
I just want, we need to get enough--
I'm not used to that from you.
We should get enough service. That's what--
We get those rates from the Rutgers Community Health Program, and they tell us based on the prior year's utilization. So it's actually up a little bit, I believe, from last year. They tell us what it will be for this year.
Okay, so it's based on the historical--
Yeah, they pick that rate. So I'm sure they're not cheating themselves.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I actually have one question for you, Dr. Bregan. I don't know if you have the answer. We also talked about this at the budget meeting about these new MacBooks. When we talked about is, you know, we tried to see if the students who graduate, they can purchase them at a discounted price. I don't know if you have the answer. If you don't have the answer, it's fine. You can bring back at the next meeting. And you mentioned at the meeting that you're going to talk to Mr. Barker. I don't know if you had a chance, but if you don't, that's fine. If we can bring to at the next meeting, I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate that too, Mr. Shi. Actually, Venkata is not feeling well tonight, and he emailed me as well, said he couldn't make it today, and he had a similar question for me to ask. I don't think the board has come to a consensus on that. I know we've talked about it a few times. And I think, you know, we got to come to what would we like to do? Would we want to give that option for our students that are graduating to purchase their MacBooks as they leave? And what would be a fair price?
Yeah.
And I know we have about a week to figure that out, so I'll do what I can, and we'll try to talk about it. My initial thought was, and I would like to ask our parents, maybe put something out real quick, is would they want them? Because I know when my kids went to college, they had to get very specific devices to whatever program they were in. Maybe that wasn't what they wanted. So I don't know that, but we'll try to get that information as quick as we can.
Yeah, probably majority of the students, if they go for like, you know, STEM and stuff, they're looking for like the most powerful machine. And but maybe for students who might not be going to STEM program, this is probably good enough. And the machines that we bought last year is very decent. So just, you know, if there's an option, yes, let's share with them. If it's decided it's not to go with that, let the students know. Again, just because it's only one week away, that's why--
I know, I know. That's fair.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Okay. All right, as you all know, Edison had a beautiful Memorial Day parade, and there was a wonderful turnout, really was. And I have to say, the district was well represented. We had both of our high school bands, Edison and JP Stevens. And we also, at the reviewing stand, the National Anthem was sung by one of our students, Lauren Dick. I believe she's from Edison High. So they did a magnificent job, you know? For those of you who weren't able to see them, you know, Dick, you know, made you very proud. Good job. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Ms. White. I just wanted to add my thoughts on all of these terrific events. You've heard of all the board members. Everyone you see up here has been all over town, visiting the different places that, you know, different schools and different events that we're invited to. And it's really an honor to see what goes on behind the walls of the classroom. From the outside, it's very hard, so when we get an invite, it seems like all of the board members are so excited to go. And it really reminds us what we're here for. And it's just been a pleasure to see the year come to a close here. And obviously, those events at the high schools were really special to remind us that even though their careers in Edison are coming to a close, there's such talent in our school system, and it seems like they're really, you know, ready to do great things in this world. So thank you to anyone watching or anyone here that extends those invitations to us as a board. So thank you, thank you. Next, I want to open up to public comment. And what I will do here, because I'll remember today, is just remind, "All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of their legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor." Thank you so much. So would anybody like to make a comment? Ms. Orchid? Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. Thank you. My first question is, will the food services be available to schoolchildren over the summer? What services are available for the children who have regressed when the schools were closed and high-bred? Any update on ROTC? Any update on a future light at the Boulevard of Eagles? I want to thank everyone who volunteered at our time-wide cleanups. There will be more scheduled on beautiful Edison. We would love to have you help. If you have any ideas of any areas in need of cleanup, please let me know. My son is graduating next Friday, and I would like to thank all the teachers, para, staff, case managers, and guidance counselors that made it possible. He has a great future ahead. I worked the primary election, and I would like to thank the janitorial staff who helped with us when we were trying to open in the morning. Some of the difficulties were, we had to find power supply strips. There wasn't enough. I don't know if you know, this year, we have these computers, not those old books anymore. So we needed power strips for two computers per table in addition to the machine at each district. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orchid.
Yeah, hey, congratulations on your son's graduation. Delighted at the Boulevard of the Eagles, that's a township issue. I know we talked about it at the Liaison Committee meeting, and we presented it to the township. I don't know where we're going, where it's going with that. That's not something for us to do. There are ROTC. I will follow up. You know, that's left in the military's hands. They have to decide whether, you know, we're appropriate for those programs. And I guess they look at how many schools have it in the local areas. I know we are, both of our schools are very receptive to having that, so we'll see what we can do for that. And I think that's like, the voting stuff and the machines there, that's kind of run by the Board of Elections, so we do help as much as we can. And I think this is the second year they had those computer machines, because there was a little bit of a problem last year with connectivity, I think, and they were not permitted to connect to our network because they had to be secure. So good thing that was worked out this year at least, so.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Joyce? Yes, Mr. Rivera?
She brought something up that I was interested. She asked about food services for the summer. Have we looked into that?
I have to check on that. I don't know if we were planning on distributing the food service in the summer. We did do it during the COVID times. I know we did. I don't think that's planned right now, but I'll find out.
The federal program ends June 30th, right?
Yes.
I wanted to say this last time in close, but you guys came out too late for closed session. I wanted to thank Chibi, Magador, and Virginia White for always coming out, supporting our women's program, because our young ladies who want to be firemen, who want to be an integral part of this community, I thank you so much for showing them that you care enough about them. And also, it was asked from one of the parents told me that at Edison High School, they were doing some type of book, some type of paper on Black history, and the lady didn't have enough books in that area. And what she stated to the person was that nobody showed that much of an interest in the books. But I believe that if you have the information and the stuff for the students, then they'll be able to show an interest, because a lot of them don't know. They don't know stuff, because even as I grow older, I learn more stuff. I learn more stuff about New Jersey history. I learn more stuff about American history all around the world, because if you are a true educator, and you think all the time, you know, every day is a learning experience for you. Then I just wanted to talk about my name being mentioned when I wasn't here at the council meeting last time, because I always wonder, what do people eat for breakfast every day? Did they spend so much time and energy on me? You know? I used to teach in most of the district of kids, and I guess our superintendent could attest to that type of behavior, like they, you know, perseverate and they get like hung up on stuff like that. But we know that they have a different type of problem. So on the discussion of the minor league, of the Sharks being in the school paying $100, you're supposed to pay $100 for each event, okay? I have nothing to do with the Board of Ed. So if cricket and minor leagues and all that stuff, I just say, hey, you so worried about one person paying $100? If you're going to be fair across the board, instead of talking stuff and saying stuff about me, just say, we're going to make everybody pay $100. Because I have nothing to do with either sport back and forth. Matter of fact, I'm a tennis person. I'm not even interested in either sport, okay? I just think it's just crazy that you're not allowed to have an opinion. And I think it's poor, poor taste for people to be that way. I think it's the way this world is going, the way people just coming in, shooting up schools and stuff, I think we'd be better people, okay? Debates are for you to debate something, not for you to make up stuff. You need to have stuff with you to solidify your argument, you know? I'm getting more and more disturbed by the behavior of adults, and I think it's very, very sad that they have to spend their, it's something missing inside of them, that they spend their time and their energy talking about other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce. Other public comment. Ms. Conway?
Elizabeth Conway, 20, Netherwood Circle. I just have a couple of questions on the finance resolutions. I don't know whether you'll give the answers tonight, or wait till Tuesday, or whichever. But number three of the finance resolutions, transfer of current year surplus to health reserves. Did you ever finalize how much savings we had by switching to the different insurance instead of being paying to do self? Do you have a number on that? I asked a number of times, and we were on the path of saving five million. But now, do you actually have a number that we were able to save? That's number one. Number 35, it says 2223 health insurance premium equivalents. I was wondering if you could explain that. And subscription busing, is that going to remain the same? Or are you increasing the rate? And I know this has been going on for a couple of years, that subscription busing should be paying for itself. And I was wondering if we ever, or if you ever took care of that cost? That's my three questions. But I still have four, three, three. I just want to talk about, number one, free lunch is supposed to end as of June 30th. And I know someone asked if we're, we're going to extend anything during the summer. Have you gotten anything about pushing it on to next year yet? Because I don't know if everyone who truly needs it is back and doing just fine and dandy. So if you have heard anything about that, I'd appreciate that. Now, on the other side, as Chairperson of the ETPTAC Committee, we announced our two winners, one from Edison High School and one from J.P. Stevens. And each received a $6,000 scholarship, which is $750 per semester. And it depends on, if they can finish in three years, they can even continue on postgraduate to get the equivalent of a completely 6,000. And I just wanted to share that the young lady from Edison High, Hannah Steinloff, phenomenal young woman, unbelievable. And I'm putting in an extra plug for her, Mr. Alderelli, because her goal is to become a history teacher at the high school level. So remember in four years, please. Okay. Just wonderful young woman. And we were so proud to give her, from Edison High School. J.P. Stevens was Presha Vijuwargi. And she's going to Cornell. And her goal is to become an astronaut. She's already in pilot school. And our committee to celebrate the winners, bring the young ladies and two of their guests out for a special dinner, because we don't have those big dinners anymore. And Hannah and her mom and sister are gladly joining us that day. But Presha cannot join us that day, or any day that week, because she's going to be in Washington, D.C., giving a presentation with major CEOs of all different companies regarding Mercury, the planet. And then when we asked her what she was going to be doing during the summer, she's going to be giving a presentation in Paris on a similar topic. So I am so glad to present these two young ladies as being excellence coming out of our schools, which was so phenomenal, and I was just so excited. I got to actually give Hannah her award at Edison High School. And I shared with Kathy Demas to do it at J.P. Stevens, reluctantly, but Kathy deserves to give out an award also. And my final item to discuss is I attended the ETEA retirement dinner last week. Because as a board member, we didn't have a couple of the dinners, and Mr. Bowden thought it was only kind enough to invite Carol and I to actually, actually come to one of the dinners as a previous board member, but as a guest. And he explained that this year alone, more than 1,000 years of experience was retiring. And that tells you that the number of teachers that retired had put in such a wonderful life for our district and for our students. And it's just so phenomenal. And the one teacher that will always be close to my heart is Dr. Stephanie Moretti from Menlo Park School, who put in 58 years alone, who was a phenomenal teacher. And I had the luxury of meeting her and working with her for a couple of weeks at the beginning of my teaching. So things are going great in this district, and I look forward to Tuesday night with the students. How's that?
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Anyone else?
I think she wanted me to address a few of her questions.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Dr. Reagan.
Regarding your question on the health reserves, those are really good questions, Mrs. Conway. You have been consistent in asking those. We initially budgeted $5 million less than we would have budgeted had we continued with a, our traditionally fully insured program. And as of late, we, we, that's what we've been paying out according to those numbers. We've also received two payments of rebates for prescription that are close to a million dollars. But the final numbers and the final decision on, on how effective it was or not, we're going to share that information with our Budget Oversight and Planning Committee. We, I think we have it scheduled for the 21st. We'll get all that data, and we'll bring that to the board, and we'll share that publicly with you to have those exact numbers. We won't be fully accurate up to date, because many medical expenses are incurred but not posted. You know, that's a term they use in that, in the insurance field. And we have to put reserves aside for those that we are, services that were rendered, but we haven't yet paid or been billed for. So we'll get that information. Regarding premium equivalents, as I said, we're no longer fully insured, we're self-insured, so we don't have a premium. But as we did this year, we work with our, our health brokers, and we calculate what's called premium equivalents, which is what helps us to determine what our costs will be per employee as we move forward. And the subscription busing this year, I believe it's $625. We had that decision that we made to make it closer to being fully funded. Because the costs, as everybody knows, have gone up for transportation regarding gas fees and all that. And the free lunch program, as far as I know, the Seamless Summer Option is not going to continue next school year. And that's the conversations that we had with our food service provider, and what we got from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture, I don't think it's going to continue unless they change something. Right now, it's slated to go back. If you see in the agenda, our prices for lunch meals and all that are listed there as well.
Yes, Ms. Madiger.
So, Dr. Reagan, there is also something called the Summer Food Service Program. It's a federal program that allows school districts that participate to provide free and reduced-priced kids' lunch over the summer. Can we look into that if our district can participate in that? Because that would be one avenue where some of those students can get lunch over the summer.
Yeah, we'll look into it. It's typically, though, for schools that have summer school programs. Then we have enrichment programs, and we have some other programs. But we don't have a dedicated summer school program. So I will look into that. We had preliminary conversations with our food service provider. We've not really done that in the past, except during the pandemic. But I'll follow up, we'll find out.
Thank you.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Just a quick comment, and so, you know, our board members and, and the residents mentioning about food, I just want to remind everyone that the board made a decision that next year, the breakfast is free for everyone. Breakfast is free for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Mr. Fagan, right?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. Nick Fagan, 42 Edgewood Road. Just had a couple of comments. Thank you first for live streaming this meeting. It is, there are, I believe, about 30 people watching us. Hello, out there in TV land. And so thank you for continuing to provide that service. We do appreciate it as residents. I was able to watch you on the way, or hear you on the way over, so I was able to catch most of the meeting, actually. So thank you for that. The second thing is, I did call today for subscription busing. I was told to call in June for next year to register, and the registration site is just, is not available yet. I was told that it will be very soon, and they are, they're working on it. And the, the woman was very, very nice, but it's not available. And you know how transportation was in the last two years, so some of us have a little bit of PTSD, and we would like to get in line. So, so we just would ask that you check in with the, the education folks, or the, the transportation folks, to make sure that that gets online. I believe they're changing it to a different service provider or something, so that they can collect the funds instead of having to come physically with checks. So, anyway. But it's not ready, it needs to be ready. The third item that I wanted to just give you guys all a notification on is not particularly Board of Education directly related in education, but it's something that's going on in the town, and I wanted the viewers to also know what's going on. There's a development, Charlie Brown's, you may have heard of it before, on Plainfield Road. The builder developer is coming back to the zoning board on June 21st at 7:00 PM down at Council Chambers. And they're going to propose more townhomes. And they're going to propose 16 townhomes for that site. Now, right now, they're age restricted, but if the, if the deed is not written properly, we will have children in our schools from that property. And so what I'm asking of you as board members is, either in your official capacity or in your personal capacity as residents of Edison, to come down to that meeting and tell the zoning board what your opinion is of making sure that we do not have extra overcrowding and extra children coming from that property into our crowded North Edison and J.P. Stevens We would also ask that you mobilize your political, your folks that, that support you, to come out to that meeting and be able to tell the Edison Zoning Commission, I think as Board of Adjustment, that, that your thoughts and your feelings on having more children in the schools from that property. We all know how the court case ended up, and, and we're not going to get into that. But you have the ability as personal residents, as well as you have political influence over your supporters. And we would ask that you have them come out and make sure that that property does not have children coming to Edison schools from that property, and that it's written in the deed. There are deeds of age-restricted properties in Metuchen that have those language written in their deeds. And I would ask you to ask your board attorney to get advice about how to advocate for that, to make sure that that language gets included in the, in the negotiation that happens between the applicant and the zoning board, that they, they make sure that it's included, that the applicant agrees to that language that prohibits schoolchildren coming from that site into the Edison School District. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Just on the site, we'll, we'll get that up and running. And it, one of the delays was we had to come up with the exact amount that we were charging for subscription busing, so. And they are trying to use Community Pass, so it could be a one-site, one-stop payment there, so you don't have to come in with a check. But I'll revisit that tomorrow with our transportation supervisor.
Thank you.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Dr. Reagan, is it possible that we, instead of having them to call or submit separate forms, is it possible we can have a simple checkbox on the parent portal, say, hey, do you want subscription bus? The parent will check it off. It's easier for it to collect the information. I don't know how easy or difficult it is, so just throw it out there.
I, I'll look into that. If, if that's more feasible to get more accurate information more quickly, we'll see. Often, we have more parents that want subscription bus than we have capacity to do. So I, I don't know if maybe there's a way to do that, we'll take a look at it.
And the, since we're on the, you know, transportation, we talked about have a, you know, sometimes the route that we provided, it, you know, the kids are not on that route. It's, it's not covering where the students live. So we talked about having a waiting list, or whatever you want to call it, people who are, who are, right now, who are not, who cannot get a subscription bus, they just share their interests as, yes, we want a subscription bus. So we can look into whether we can have another route to accommodate, if we have enough students, we can maybe possibly accommodate these students with another route. I, I know some other routes are fixed, but there are some interests from, I think, in people on the northern side. I was told they have like 20-something students, but it's not enough for just one bus. Maybe we put them together with some other students nearby, we can, we can put one route in there. Just that, a, a, a waiting list or intentions, you know, for the, the students who, right now, they, they cannot get a subscription bus.
Yeah, we'll, we'll explore all options and do the best we can. Obviously, this year was a very difficult year, in the way it started. Hopefully, next year's better with the additional buses that we purchased, so we're going to take more ownership of that. We will definitely look at anything we can to, to make it more convenient for our parents.
Yeah, something, you know, related to the buses, enrollment. I don't know how our kindergarten enrollment is, is, is doing so far. You know, I, I have a plea to the public, if you have, you know, kindergarten students, please enroll them now, don't wait till the last minute. And hope that we don't have to get in, into the same situation last year with the enrollment issues. Hope we'll, you know, get them quicker. And Mrs. White has some suggestions about how to possibly reduce the, the issues of enrollment, and I hope that, you know, administration can look into it, maybe get, pay our additional staff in the, in the ed center to help and stuff like that, so to prevent the issue from last year happening this year.
We're working that too. As a matter of fact, I have a meeting scheduled with Mrs. White, I believe, tomorrow morning at 9:30.
To talk about that? All right.
Amongst other things.
Okay. This is not a planted question, I'm sorry. It's, it is not.
BP, if I could just address Mr. Fagan for a second. In regards to what you suggested, suggested for us to go there and, you know, bring our people there for the meetings, that's an excellent point. We definitely will fight any overdevelopment that's going to cause overcrowding in our schools, 100%. But to that fact, I would also suggest that we talk to the council people as well, they're sitting right here as well, one of them, but also the mayor. When they're appointing vested, interested developers on that board, they should think twice about what's going to happen to the schools as well. So that's something that also needs to be addressed, so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Patel, thank you. Any other public comment? Ms. Joyce, did you have a very brief, I think?
I wanted to ask about the-
Was, did she get her six minutes?
No, I never get, I never do six minutes. You know, nobody has-
Excuse me.
I'm going to ask you about-
Mr. Patel, if everybody's, excuse me. Excuse me, Ms. Joyce, Mr. Patel. If everyone's done with their public comment-
She doesn't strike privileges like other people did.
She's not, she did not use her six minutes.
I did not use my six minutes, and I don't know what the problem is.
Mr. Patel, we, we allow anyone to come up for rebuttal. Do we have a clock on how much time she has left? Three minutes?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can we make it two minutes?
We, I can make it two minutes, because I don't, I don't get into side issues. A person asks me-
Just, just to clarify, this is very fair what I'm doing.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm asking about the electric bus program for the state, and about us somehow being like a pilot program. I want to know how that feeds into, because people want to know about the prescription buses for them. So how that ties in, I want to know about, you know, because I want to know important stuff instead of foolish stuff. I want to know about the electric buses. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How does that feed in? How does, you know, how does it save us as the taxpayers, the electric buses, you know? And what is the state going to supply, to supply us with that would cut back on our taxes? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know that that came up at probably more than one of our Liaison Committee meetings about the electric buses, and our Grants Coordinator was working on, it's a grant, and going through that process. I, I'll try to find out where we are on that. You know, I, I tend to be a little pessimistic and believe it when I see it, Joyce, when the buses actually show up. But if there's any way to get any assistance, whether the buses are electric, diesel, or gasoline, I don't really care. If we can get it, we'll apply for it, and hopefully, hopefully we get it. I'll keep you posted.
Mr. Fagan, did you, how much time did you have left? Two minutes?
I'll only take one.
Okay.
If, if less than that. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for, for supporting. I, I really appreciate that. I just also wanted to let the board know that there is actually an opening in the Zoning Board of Adjustment right now, and the council is interviewing folks, and that you need to be watching council meetings, please. And the folks out in the public, you need to be watching council meetings, because I believe that there will be another appointment, because there's an opening. There's actually two openings right now, one for a full-time member and one for a, a fill-in member. And that extra appointment is coming up anytime soon. And then also, there are five members that expire their terms- And then also, there are five members that expire their terms at the end of this year. So you folks are very influential in Edison politics. And I would ask you to move that your folks mobilize and make sure that they do what the Board wishes and not overcrowd the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board President?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan, you brought up a great point, you know, about the school overcrowding, about the approval of these housings. I hope, I don't know who has the authority to appoint, the mayor or council. We can never get a straight answer. Who, who appoints these people? To appoint either a former board member or a current board member. I don't know if that allows, if it's not allowed. At least a former board member who has seen these, these issues, you know, can speak on, you know, based on the experience of the Board at these meetings. So, and I think the, the zoning board has totally ignored the facts about how many students coming from these houses. They use a .5 per household. And I just wanted to tell the public, this is on record. For the eight houses that's on the Harding Avenue, okay? And their estimate is .4, a .5 students of these eight condos. So that should, should be four total. As of last year, five of those houses had students enrolling in our schools and the number was eight. Five houses have eight students. So that's a fact. You know, whether the zoning board or whatever board, whether they're going to consider or not, but this is a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Motion to end public comments. I make the motion?
Motion.
Mr. Shi's second. A roll call, please. Ms. Cluck.
Dr. Heda?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel? Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
All yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you. We're, we're going to, Ms. Cluck, if you could read why we're adjourning to privileged session. I will tell you that we will be adjourning from privileged session today. We will not be coming back out for any action to be taken. Ms. Cluck.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is attorney-client privileged discussion regarding student matters, litigation brought by former employees and students, staffing issues, and personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Shi, motion. Second, Bureau Patel. All in favor? Aye. Any and a's. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.